It is now 7:31, July 7, 2006. If everybody please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
If we could, before we start our meeting, it was early this morning, I guess wee hours, about 5:00 a.m., a city councilwoman, Mary Ann Mahaffey, who had died of leukemia after serving 31 years in office. If we could pause for a moment of silence for her. It's a long term of public servant, serving her city, and she's well liked by many, so she'll be missed. At this time, we have our citizen participation on agenda items. Has anybody here like to speak on this item? If not, I'll close participation. We have no presentations at this time, so it'll lead us into our agenda item, public hearing. Public hearing and consideration of adoption of the motion to vacate the public easement located at 177-17 Masonic, U.S. Manufacturing Building. And I don't know if there's anybody in the audience here from U.S.? Good, come on up, if you would. And go ahead and have a seat here and give us your name and...
My name is David Eagle, and I'm the facilities engineer for U.S. Manufacturing, representing the Joe Simon Trust, who is selling the building.
Okay. And maybe just for the participation here, just a little bit of an explanation of what the request is and what's...
When the building was built, and I'm guessing it was seven years ago, there was a pipeline that ran underneath the building, public water line. It was moved at that time and never registered. And basically, we're trying to register the move of the line, so that you will have the easement if there's an issue, and we can sell the building.
Okay. And the building that you're referring to, that you're looking to occupy, is the building that has the atrium on it next to the...
Yeah, the glass pyramid.
Right. The office building, is the building in question. Okay, real good. I'm going to open to audience participation. It's public hearing at this time. It is now 7:35. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Okay, I'm going to close audience participation, 7:36. Bring it back up here for council, Councilman Peterson.
I have one question.
Sure.
Actually, what we're doing is we're vacating the old lines.
The easement, yeah.
Okay.
The easement to the line.
Okay, so it's basically already gone.
Yeah, you could have the same drawing I have.
Right. So I just want to clarify this. This green section right here is what we're getting rid of, right?
Correct.
And the orange section is where it's been moved to.
That is correct.
Okay, and they're going to cap off this end on each, or it's already capped?
It's already been done, eight years ago.
Okay. And so we'll still have the rights to this area?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's all I want to...
Councilman Haggerty.
It's fairly exciting what may happen with this building with regards to the possible tenant or new owners coming into the old corporate headquarters there. It would be a real asset to the city. And with that, I'd like to make the motion to adopt the resolution approving the vacation of a public easement located at 177-17 Masonic, U.S. Manufacturing Building.
Second.
For it.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Haggerty, second by Mayor Proton Wilson. I see no other discussion on it. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Six-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Consideration five, a city council discussion in consideration relative to the citizen participation section of council meetings. This came as a form of a request from Barbara Jennings at our last council meeting, and had asked to place this on the agenda in regards to clarifying what the rules here is for running our meetings. I would just state at this point, it has been my understanding, and I've been conducting the meetings with the intent that, right now at the beginning, when we have citizen participation on agenda items, that period there would be, that portion of the meeting is for anybody that'd like to speak on any agenda item, but isn't able to stay here. So it's a courtesy to allow them to be able to give us their opinion, because they have to be somewhere else and not have to wait through the course of the rest of the meeting. And then on every agenda item, we always open it up to the public for public participation. And then in the end, you have the opportunity to give us a recap in the meeting. So theoretically, you would have two times to speak on every agenda item. The first time would be strictly to allow you the courtesy, not to have to wait throughout the meeting, but still be able to voice your opinion. So that's how I've been conducting our meetings thus far. And Barbara Jennings asked for clarification as the rest of council's understanding. Councilman Peterson.
Unfortunately, Barbara Jennings couldn't be here tonight because she's on vacation. She wanted it on a regular meeting. She didn't realize they were going to have a special meeting, we were going to have a special meeting. But originally, the intent when we added the three minutes in the beginning of the council meetings, I believe that was because a lot of residents had voiced their opinions, that they only got to speak at the end of the council meeting, after council had already voted on topics on the agenda. And they wanted to speak before council voted, before they, before council had a chance to vote. And I believe that's really why we added the three extra minutes in the beginning. And like most cities, they get to speak in the beginning on council or on agenda items, and then speak at the end as well. So I'd like to keep it that way, speak at both times with a limit of three minutes at the beginning, but I'd like to see no limit at the end. Thank you.
Okay. Just to clarify, though, they do get to speak before we take a vote on each agenda item. They get three minutes of participation, so they speak on every agenda item before we vote. Really, the end only comes as a recap or something, maybe they'd like further to discuss. And if I understand that, what would end up happening, according to the graph, because what I had asked the city manager to do is run a comparison to all the communities around us. If I understand your position, if they talk three minutes in the beginning, nothing in the middle, that totally eliminates their participation as conversation tries, you know, because I don't see if somebody comes in and has a thought and wants to go ahead and express it. Often enough, things can change as conversation. They would eliminate themselves, they would actually lose participation by eliminating the middle. I think that the participation in the middle is very important for us, especially before we make a decision. So I would not be in favor of losing the in-between participation on each agenda item. Other communities do it that way. East Point, I let you talk in the beginning, and then in the end, but nothing in between on each agenda item. So that would be my position. Councilman Haggerty?
Yes, for the 20-plus years I've been coming to the meetings or been sitting up here, the public has always had the opportunity, before a decision was made, to add to the thought process of council on each agenda item. And I would never want to vary from anything of that nature. I think it's important to hear from the public and hear their thoughts on each agenda item as brought forward from a decision standpoint. The speaking at the end had, even though there was no formal rules years ago on it, speaking at the end was always on other items that were non-agenda items without trying to go back, rehash into the agenda items of new business that was needed to be brought forward from the community at that point in time. And I think that's predominantly, pretty much, what we're receiving at this point in time. The speaking at the beginning, when we initially started it, we had actually received some emails and some conversations, or conversations, emails, phone calls, from council standpoint to say, hey, look, you know, my kids, we got homework to do, we got to get the kids to bed. I feel really impelled to come and have, to voice my opinion on one of these agenda items, but I can't stay to item six and be there till 10:00 or 10:30, because I need to get my kids to bed and do those type of things, or whatever. I have to get up early in the morning, or I have to go to my shift. So that's where we got into speaking on the agenda items at the start. And I think, for the most part, it's worked fairly well at this point in time, as far as for those who want to speak on one of the agenda items and then have to get home to address their own family issues on it. The, it was a real nice report that was put together by the administration on cities, Clinton Township, East Point, Roseville, St. Clair Shores, Sterling Heights, and Warren. There's only two of those six cities that actually allow conversation at the start of it from the citizen participation, allow you to speak on the items if you can't stay. I think that it's, even though that we're in the minority on the communities, I think it's a good thing to keep that side of the agenda. So, and as far as from a time limit standpoint, the cities vary from three minutes to five minutes from a time limit standpoint on the citizen participation side of it. And currently, if you have a, if you were to speak, say we had seven items, and you spoke on every item, you have 21 minutes worth of discussion you can have, plus you got three minutes at the end, depending on the number of items that you wanted to speak on, on that given night. So it gives a citizen, you know, that timeframe or that multiple of three minutes times the number of items, plus the three minutes at the end to be able to do it. And I think, again, for the most part, it's been working fairly well as far as for the citizens to get their point apart across. I think one of the things that we struggle from a council standpoint is that most of our meetings, we're getting into a point where most of our meetings are running into the 11 o'clock hour, starting at 7:30 and going well into 11:00, 11:30. We've had some run into the 12, 12 o'clock hours. We're running real close to having to run a second meeting to try to proceed through. Years ago, there were two meetings, but that was before zoning board of appeals and planning, and that's when council handled more than just what we're handling on here. So as a council, I think we're trying to be fiscally responsible, because we're trying to contain the cost at doing the meetings, because the meetings get fairly expensive. We each receive a stipend of $150 to be here at a meeting every night, so if you start doing that twice a month, that's tax dollars that we don't feel that should be allocated to doing something of that nature. So we really struggle trying to, that's why we struggle to keep the process moving, and I think that that's an appropriate way to do it. So I think it's been working fairly well in the majority, you know, in the majority of cases at this point in time. Thank you.
And I guess I think we hit all our marks. Like Councilman Haggerty said, if you're not able to stay for whatever reasons, you need to be home, you have an opportunity to address your point and leave. That's the courtesy point of it. And then still be able to talk on each agenda item. If we have 10 items on the agenda, and somebody wanted to speak on each one three times, that's 30 minutes of talk time, and then you could recap it on the end or add something new additionally on there. So I think we've added a lot more participation than in the past, because there was never even the courtesy of the three minutes upfront, which forced people to have to stay if they were compelled to want to speak. So I believe that does hit all the marks and allows us to accommodate everybody's needs. I don't know that if you come and use the three minute as talking about an agenda item as your foregust at the beginning to tell us right before we even started discussion, and then you tell us during discussion, and then recap it on the end, you know, I think most of us who would firmly understand one time of telling us what your position was, three times on the same topic, I don't think really drives the point home any further. And East Point is one of those five minutes, so they have five minutes upfront. Now, if we had 10 items, like most of the time we have, you would have only five minutes in which to discuss all those topics. They do not allow you to speak in the middle at all. And the next time you can speak, then again, is at the end of the meeting after it's completely done. So I think it eliminates a lot of the interaction during the course of the meeting, after you start hearing some of the opinions of council, that may bring, raise points that maybe either think of, or there's points that the citizens bring to us that we may have not. But I think that's what the intensity of the meetings are for, is to exchange ideals and find out what is the best method of resolve to whatever we have come before us.
May I mention that, does East Point have two meetings a month?
I don't know.
Yeah, and Clinton Township, I think has two meetings a month.
Yeah, just for participation, here's how the neighboring does, so people have an ideal, because we have a chart and you don't. Clinton Township allows three minutes at the start of the meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, speaking at the beginning of a meeting is no. Speaking at the end of a meeting is yes. They're open for comments after each agenda item at the end. If speaking on a non-agenda item, they have to fill out a card prior to the meeting with name, address, and topic. That's how Clinton Township. East Point has...
You're saying it's three minutes.
Three minutes.
Clinton Township.
Okay, and Jack, that's on those meetings, three minutes then. East Point, excuse me, East Point has five minutes at the beginning, they have no discussion in between, there's no open comments on each agenda item, and then they can speak again in the end. Roseville has the same procedure as we have. They have three minutes at the beginning, agenda items only at the beginning of the meeting, open for comments after each agenda item. St. Clair Shores, citizen participation open only at the end of the meeting, and they have five minutes on that. Sterling Heights was unique. Communications from citizen is listed at 10:00 p.m. Business portion of the meeting will pause at 10:00 p.m. and resume when citizens are done. So they've set a timeframe, so here you got to wait till 10 o'clock to even be able to speak on any item, and that's the portion of the meeting. And Warren has no time limit, but we all know in the paper, they go to 3, 4 o'clock in the morning. I think most of the people always complain about the meetings that they have. Speaking at the end of the meeting on any topic, fill out form before the meeting with name, address, and topic, no time limit. So that kind of gives you an idea of what the surrounding communities do for us. Councilman Peterson.
I just wanted to add to Clinton Township. I talked to Bob Cannon, he said, yes, they do have a three-minute time limit, but you can submit a request, a resident can submit a request to be on the agenda, and then they just have to submit it to the city clerk, and then they can speak on any topic they want for any length of time they want. So I mean, that's quite a bit of difference. I know it's a three-minute time limit, but they can be on the agenda, so I don't think that that's, you know, telling them that they don't count and they're not allowed to speak. Thank you.
Mayor Proton Wilson?
I think it's good that we allow people to speak at the beginning if they can't stay. I think that's important. We've got lots of families who need to do other things. And basically, the city council business, what we're really trying to do is to take care of the business at hand, rather than do it as a social sort of thing. There is another way, an additional way, to get your point across and to ask the questions that you think are really important, and you have no time limit. And that is to go in and see the city manager previous to the meeting, if you like, the week before, call him on the phone, whatever, and you're not limited to three minutes. You could talk to him as long as he's able to listen, or as our assistant city manager could listen. And many of the questions that people have could be answered that way. Also, you know, if you're really looking to make a change and to help make things better in the city, I think of a year ago at the Lions Carnival. Right after the carnival, I received a phone call and a letter from a lady on Vista Way who was appalled at the fact that live animals were being given away as prizes. And so she expressed that concern, and we were able to bring it to council with an ordinance and make that change within a month and a half, two months. And she did not come to council to talk about this, but she expressed her concern and suggested a remedy for it. And I think, you know, there are so many ways that a citizen has to communicate with the city, but I think it's of utmost importance that we allow citizens to speak at the meetings and after each agenda item before the vote is taken. Now, that isn't done at the county board of commissioners. You speak at the beginning, you speak at the end, and they get business done, and they get it done rather quickly. But I think that it's good that we allow the citizens to speak early if they can't stay, that they are allowed to speak after each agenda item before the vote, and that they're allowed to speak at the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Haggerty?
You know, one of the things, too, that I received from a number of citizens is a week before the meeting, the items are posted on the scroll on the television, and it's on our city website. Well, I can't tell you how many times I already received an email along with their attachments or supporting documentation that they've gone in to and said, you know, hey Doug, this is what I think of this particular topic, and here's what it is, and by the way, here's the attachments of my supporting argument that goes along with that, and why I feel strongly in this position. And I think whether you go to my email, or you go to the city email and get it to all of us, I think it's a super effective way when you have a real solid argument that you want to be made, whether you can be here or don't be, or you can't be here, or even if you're going to be here and speak on it, it gives the, your reasoning and all the documentation. I think that's actually one of the strongest ways of making an opinion to council in today's technology, is to email us along with the supporting documents, because facts are facts. And when you back it up with the facts that support it, it's a very strong way of getting your message across to anyone, from council to the management side of it. It's a very strong, strong way to do it. Thanks.
Jack, do you have your light on?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to clarify the, because I act as the attorney for Clinton Township. It's true that you can request and have an agenda item created for an issue that you have in Clinton Township, but that, number one, must be an issue that involves township business. And number two, they try to make sure that the items that come before the township board actually involve policy-related issues that the township's involved in. For example, you can't create an agenda item and come in and state your views on some political issue, or the war in Iraq, or something like that. And if you have an issue that's really more of an administration concern, say a complaint on your water bill, or something relating to the administration of city services or township services, they'll try to handle that administratively.
Thanks, thanks for that clarification. Mayor Proton Wilson?
There is an occasion when the whole community is, excuse me, is excited about a particular issue. Let's suppose, just imagine that 40 or 50 people were excited about what's going on on Masonic, on the paving of that street. Then I think we need, if we had 40 people here at the meeting, and each one of them wanted to speak for three minutes, this is going to take us a couple more hours. And there is an opportunity then to have people get together as a group and have a spokesperson who might share the concerns of many. Sometimes when a petition has been circulated to, you know, 200 people, and we probably need one spokesperson for that, or a couple of spokespeople for that, rather than three minutes for everyone who's there. So those are just housekeeping things on trying to communicate, get business done, and get the meeting over at a reasonable hour. I don't know if there's a minimum that we want to put in there, you know, if there's 10 people on the same issue or not, with the same feelings on it. But just maybe use reasonable, common sense, and agree that this is another way to handle it expediently, to get business done. Thank you.
Thanks. And really, with the exception of a couple individuals that were uncertain about our rules, I have to really state that everybody has been very cooperative in helping me run with the meetings, even when we've had, I see Mike out here, when we had the residents on the parks, and, you know, you get a couple, three, four, and they're grouped together, and they're all pretty much stating the same opinion. I'll even say, you know, show of hands how many of support is, or anything different that we haven't already heard. Everybody cooperates with it. Subtly, someone may have just one more thing they're compelled to say that still supports it, but for the most part, everybody's very cooperative in running, because, you know, we don't need to, 60 people saying the same thing doesn't drive the point home. A couple hit topics, show of hands, and we understand what the position is on that particular topic for the folks here. And everybody's been very accommodating, even when we had three minutes. I don't cut someone off in the middle of the sentence, we finish it, and I'll get criticized. Well, you know, you let them go on. We just don't start a new thought, you know, we don't disrespect the rules, because when you do it for one, then you got to start doing it for others, and that's where it becomes a hard balance. And we do try to take in consideration everybody's position. And again, I know most of us have emails, all of us. I know this council's very accommodating for making arrangements to respond to letters, or emails, or phone calls. I think all of us have some means of communication. I know the city manager's office is spectacular about trying to resolve or get your questions answered. If there's something that gets delivered to him that is asked to be passed down to all of council, that travels that way. And again, lastly, I have so many residents that take advantage, I'm here every Thursday. I spend eight hours a day, every Thursday, four Thursdays out of the month, it's never been done in the city, to accommodate. That's another way for people to make their concerns known. That's what we do, we want to work for you. We need to hear your input so that we can do a good job for you. So I think of anything with all that efforts we put forth, I don't think really, there's very many can argue the fact that we're limiting participation, or not wanting to hear your needs or concerns, or not working your best interests. But we do, would like to have an orderly meeting, and I think that when we have to make some tough decisions, you know, I don't like to do it at 12:00, 12:30. We're all getting tired, you know, we're getting slap happy, and it just gets to the point, you're not, you're not fresh, you're not on top of your game, and I don't think that's the best time to make decisions. So I think that's all we're really trying to get at. And if it does continue to create late meetings, I don't, everyone wants to see us be like Warren at 3:00 in the morning, where we might as well go to two meetings, because I don't think anybody should make decisions at that time in the morning after having all of us worked all day long and be responsible for what we've done. So, Councilman Haggerty?
Yeah, one last thing on it. You know, a while ago, we talked about having a wireless building and being able to use laptops. You know, you'd be surprised, the number of emails, when I get home after the meeting, and you pull up your email, and the number of emails that are actually, that folks are sitting at home watching, and, you know, they can't, they can't jump up and run to the meeting, because they got family issues that they're having to get to. So there's a number of emails that we all receive after each meeting. And one of the things that we talked about a long time ago was the possibility of having this as a wireless building, so we could bring in our laptops, so that those who are at home can actually send us an email. And some of those emails can be public information, they don't have to come directly to me, they could actually come into a general box, and all of us see an email evenly across the board. And that's another way, while the meeting's going on, to get another way of getting information to it. And I think the more information we get, the better decisions as a body we make.
Okay. I don't have any lights, so I'm going to take it out to the citizens for participation on this item. Come on up and state your name and address and your thoughts on this.
Kristen Gatward, 15627 Van Avenue. I have the same supporting documentation from Barb Jennings that you all received, and I really thought that somebody up there would have discussed a little bit of it. Do you want to start? Okay. The rules regarding the three-minute limitations was brought into effect August 12, 2004. They were to expire November of 2004. So apparently, they've been expired, because they've never been brought up again. Councilman Acavetti, at that meeting, did a proposal adding citizen participation at the beginning of meetings, so as to increase participation and not curtail any citizen participa-- oh, actually, let me quote this, "increase participation and not curtail any public speaking," unquote. Councilman Haggerty agreed and went even further by saying, quote, "A citizen could speak at the beginning and the end of the meeting, and let citizen participate on each individual item at the discretion of the mayor," unquote. There was no three-minute rule added to that in the middle. Councilwoman Wilson, or I'm sorry, Councilwoman Wilson Peterson and Councilwoman Jennings all agreed a person could then speak at three different points of the meeting. So there was never a rule to pass the limit a person could speak, so they could speak at the beginning, in the middle, and the end. So, I also have a Roberts Rules, and Mayor, you've been, not a victim, but you have done this. The presiding officer should give close attention to each speaker's remark during the debate. He cannot inter-- he or she cannot interrupt the person who has a floor so long as the person does not violate any of the assembly rules and no disorder arises. The presiding officer must never interrupt a speaker simply because he or she knows more about the manner than the speaker does. So, in a debate, each member has a right to speak twice on the same question on the same day, but cannot make a second speech on the same question so long as any member still has to speak. Now, you talk about 10, 15 items being on the agenda, and you could have three minutes to speak, and 10 items, that would be 30 minutes. There's only one or two people in this building who speak on each agenda item, and they speak more than three minutes. Mr. Haggerty, you spoke 19 minutes at the last meeting, and that was only timed up to 9:36. And we know the meeting ran well after 9:36. So I think you should allow the people to speak before the meeting. It states nothing in the meeting that you guys discussed this, states nothing about having to leave the meeting to go home. Somebody wants to speak in the beginning of the meeting on an agenda item, and then during the agenda item, fine. The end, citizen participation, you want to speak on something else, because the vote's already been passed, and you already know how you're voting on each agenda item before you even enter the building. We all know that. So let the people speak. We're not an audience, we're not your court, we are citizens, and we put you all where you are sitting, and we can all remove you. Thank you.
Thank you for your thought. That's the intent of the meeting, is to get to clarification of how we're going to conduct it. Go ahead, Jack.
Mayor, I just want to clarify that Roberts Rules of Order references that she's making, the term "member" is used, and that's referring to a member of the body, meaning one of the actual elected officials, not someone who's a member of the public at large.
Right, yeah, I understood that, thank you. Somebody else in the audience like to speak on the topic? Okay, well, come on up.
I'm just trying to be the last one.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, my name is Jody Stefanoff, 32102, D. Stefanoff Court. Well, we had a new council here tonight present. We start the, to allow the audience to speak for trivia notes before they start the discussions of business of the night. I think it's a good record to see, agree with the mayor. And I love the participation of each agenda item. I think it's the most effective, very close to what is going to happen in a few seconds, that the citizen has something to say, to relate to the council body, hoping that it makes sense and you accept it, and that's just like an electronic wave that comes to you from us. I think I like that, rather than wait for them the last one, or even from the beginning. The beginning is only the necessity for family reasons, other reasons, they got no time, they got their chance. But the best way is to be here and communicate directly with you. I just love to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. We enjoy when that happens. Vanya, come on up.
Vanya Abs, 31641 York Street. In my experience of coming to council meetings for some eight years now, I have only known three times when it was the audience that made the meetings go long. That was Kendor, McKinley Park, and the crematorium, where it was really filled the room, and maybe that's what made the meetings long. In all due respect, I think Councilman Hagerty does over, go over the issues way too many times, and I find that council themselves is what drags the meetings late. I don't think it's audience participation. I'm not for a time limit, but if we extended it a three-minute warning and then went to five minutes, so that a person could finish their thoughts, I think that would be acceptable if we had to have a time limit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Anybody else? Come on up.
Mike Lessig, 15201 Fairview. First of all, I'd like to say I believe the beginning, the middle, and the end citizen participation is a great idea. The one thing I'm kind of confused about is, and I, what could help is some written guidelines as this is, obviously, we're going to make some kind of rules. If I come at the beginning and I have to leave at 8:00, do I get to speak on each agenda item for three minutes, or do I get three minutes total to address any issues on the agenda that I might have? That was one question. Mr. Hagerty was talking about a few different guidelines, and I think that would be helpful to clarify that. And at the end, does that same thing apply? Because you mentioned you can speak three minutes on any agenda item during the discussion, and then you could speak on each agenda item at the end of the meeting, and for, what it sounded like was if you had seven agenda items, you spoke for three minutes each during the actual meeting, and then you could speak again on each of those agenda items. So I could actually sit here for 42 minutes and speak on those, which I think would put me to sleep. But what I think would be helpful is to clarify those guidelines, and so that they're even written out as simple rules. I agree with Vanya that if we had a three-minute warning, and perhaps this is at the end of the citizen participation at the end of the meeting, therefore, I can get to my three minutes, I'm in the middle of a thought, I get some kind of notice that it's, my time's about up, and then I could finish my thought, wrap it up, and bring closure to it, rather than being cut off in the middle with a beep or an egg timer, or whatever it is. That seems to be less than participating in the process.
We just need to find a better way of, of working this out.
But I just have one more thing.
Go ahead.
Real quick. As far as items on the cable channel with regard to the agenda, one of the things that I think would be frustrating is if I came to the meeting at 7:30, I spoke on my issues, and then during the meeting, something popped up and came onto the agenda that could be controversial, then it's short-circuiting the process. I appreciate, I went to the website today, printed out my agenda before I came, that's always helpful. So if that, if we can minimize the pop-up items on the agenda, I think that would be helpful, too. So thank you very much.
Right. And that was a good idea, Mike. I know that other cities do. Once we clarify what we're doing to have the rules posted back there, I know a lot of other council meetings that I attend, they have it right back there as to what the procedures and rules are of order, and so allow somebody that maybe for the first time that ever attends a meeting, understands the procedures here. And I just want to make one mention, and this is what kind of is the confusion, just to recap, when I took office, there was no three minutes at the beginning. It was always each agenda item in the end. There was no participation in the beginning. So the intent was to add this, because we did have, I've had a lot of inquiries, I don't want to stay that long, you know, and I got to sit and wait, and what time do you think, and maybe I'll get there at 9:30, and then they miss it. So we thought we had captured an ideal that, well, if we put it at the beginning, they could still participate and then go about their day. So that's what the original intent, when we put it in there, was for a courtesy to allow everybody to participate however their needs seat fit. Now it's a confusion that I'm hoping today we'll be able to resolve, but that's how I ran the meeting, with the intent of why we were doing what we were doing. Mayor Proton Wilson.
Mike mentioned adding something to the agenda at the late hour. I understand that, and I would like to see us add at the beginning of our meeting, approval of the agenda. And then we either approve that agenda, if we want to add something or take something away, that we do it at that time, not at 10:00 at night. So I think that would help our meetings run better, and it would keep from creating the idea that, you know, we're sneaking something in at the last minute, because we have no intention of sneaking anything. What we're really trying to do is conduct the city's business in a businesslike manner. And I think to add that, and after the Pledge of Allegiance, to add approval of the agenda. And then, if you're not adding it then, you're not adding it. People then have an opportunity to come before the night is late. Thank you.
That's a great suggestion. Councilman Hagerty.
Yeah, one last thing is the, on the website, like where Mike went tonight, and he printed out the agenda that was on there, could be, one of the things we talked about also was taking the supporting documentation that we get, so not only do you see the agenda, but you actually can go and get the full packet. Are we doing that now? Can somebody go on and do that? Have we got to the ability where we can scan that in and put that in? So when Mike wants to come, and he wants to get not only the agenda, but he wants to get all the supporting documentation, just get the same packet that we get, that he can get that through, he can print that out before the meeting.
One of the items that was brought up at the last council meeting, I believe by Councilman Acavetti, was to pursue the paperless agenda.
Right.
And bring that back. And we will bring that back to you. By having a paperless agenda, what that means is that all of the items are either electronically sent to us or scanned into a PDF format, which by PDFing the format, you know, you downgrade the size of a file from just scanning, because you know scanning takes up a lot of megabytes. So once we get to that point, then, and we PDF the entire council agenda packet, then it can directly go on the webpage, similar to what we did with the budget this year, which was we PDFed the budget. So it was in a PDF format, and then we put that on the, we put that on the webpage. So once we get to the point of getting the approval of the paperless agenda, then that also opens the door, and will require laptops on the part of council members. It opens the door, then, for the electronic communication that you referred to. There would then be the potential or possibility of emailing in during a council meeting. But we need to get to that point. We've had the figures for quite a while, in terms of the cost of doing this, and the timing may be right, because we've had another successful fiscal year, at least at this point, to where we've met our, we've met our revenue expectations, and we were under our expenditure side, and are looking at another surplus. So that may give us that one-time opportunity to expend monies out of our saves account for those special needs, and get this thing on board, and get it moving forward.
Just even like the drawings that we saw tonight for that easement, it'd be great for somebody who got the agenda, they could see all the prints, they could see all the supporting documentation, and they can see everything, because a lot of times, you're sitting in the audience, you see an agenda item, but you have no idea unless you came here to the city to get a copy of everything, and most citizens don't have time to do that.
Councilman Saxauer.
After listening to Mrs. Abs, I, I think compromise is a good thing. I think if we could compromise more in this world, some of these terrible things that are going on right now would stop. I would not have a problem with a three-minute talk, perhaps a beep or something, whatever it is, and let somebody wrap it up for another couple minutes, because I don't like people getting cut off in the middle of their point. When somebody's up there trying to make a point, I don't really like it when they say, "Okay, you're done, turn the mic off, it's a done deal." I think we should have a warning that the time is about up, with a five-minute maximum, and I think a little compromise will go a long way at these meetings.
Okay. Do I have any other? I closed audience participation. Come on up. Come on up.
Wait, I just want to check.
No, come on up.
I was waiting, because somebody started talking, ready for the end.
Patrice Schrata, 32352 Crestwood. First off, I don't think the problem with the whole three-minute rule was the fact that they weren't getting enough time, because a lot of times, people don't need to speak on, per se, the agenda items. I think it's great we do it before, great we do it in the middle. The problem was at the end. If you have three or four unrelated, non-agenda items to speak on, and you're cut off, I think that's where most of the public, at least everybody I know, was where everybody was getting a little ticked, because they felt that they couldn't get their point across. I really think it's kind of stupid to constantly compare us to other cities and what other cities do. Frazier is a four-square-mile city. All these other cities are much larger than us. They have a bigger population base by far than Frazier. So constantly, you know, compare apples to apples, not apples to oranges, okay? If we're going to compare, compare something that at least is kind of the size of us. As far as having the special meetings, and we don't want to stay late, nobody wants to stay late, not just you guys, but you guys are getting an income, and you guys ask the people of this city to elect you, to represent them, you know, to do that. And if that means giving up extra hours, as I've been told by certain council people that say it takes 30 hours a week to do the job you're doing, great, but you asked to do that job. So I'm sorry, but complaining about it is a bit ridiculous to me. Not to mention the fact that you guys keep having all these special meetings. And, you know, I realize, because I'm at pretty much all the meetings, yes, things do get a little bit out of hand at times. Yes, people do beat the dead horse. Is that a normal thing? Not so much for the participation of the citizens. We're just sitting there. It's just, I'm very frustrated right now. As far as seeing Joff, that's a great thing, you know? Yeah, if you can come in on a Thursday and see you, and come in whenever to see Joff, that's great, but a lot of people work nine to five, just like everybody else, and they can't do that. So I think, you know, while that would be great for somebody who doesn't really work, for people who do, probably not such a good thing. I have, I wrote this out because I knew I was going to be irritated, but it amazes me that in our own charter, it says, "No person will have a reasonable opportunity to be heard." Our own Bill of Rights, Article 1, states prohibiting the free exercise thereof or abridging the freedom of speech. But often, in our council meetings, if somebody isn't like what's being said, that's when we get cut off. And there isn't, there's no, okay, this person gets three minutes, but then these other people get 15, 20 minutes, and they're speaking on something totally irrelevant also. I do think that every person should have their right to be heard. Moreover, I do agree with Vanya, is the incessant need of the council members to disagree over and over, and constantly repeating what has been already said a thousand times, that is to blame for why our council meetings go over constantly. I also see how heads go down, eyes look away, and people do that "hm" sound when somebody comes up who comes to regular meetings. I don't think the people, the citizens who come into this council meeting to voice their opinions should ever be treated with disrespect. And the citizens at home should cheer them, because at least these are people who are trying to get involved in the city, trying to make a positive change for this city, and trying to make things better. So cheering at them, commenting on it, although sometimes I don't agree with them, they have every right to be heard, just as every council person before us had a right to be heard when they sat on this side of the table. And there were council people who used to come in here, and they would speak for a very long time on every single item, and while I necessarily didn't always agree, and the people didn't necessarily think it was an important thing to be heard, they listened, and they respected that person. And that person should be doing the same thing as a council person, as was done for him. Thank you.
Thanks. And I just want to clarify about the long hours. I'm a workhorse. I can go to six, seven wee hours in the morning. I don't think we make our best sound decisions. And I don't think anybody can say that at 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning, if you put in 12, 15-hour days, and we're making some serious decisions. That's not complaining. I'll stay here till the cows come home if we got to do work, but I'm just saying that as long as we're doing work, that's the intent of what the meetings are, and I want to make certain that we stay orderly and professionally. And, you know, I strive very hard, I go to other council meetings and other municipalities to see how they conduct it, and pick up different rulings and different ways to try to make it, so it's very peace. If we're all going to agree to disagree, like Joe always says, that's okay if you disagree, you know, as long as you walk away and you're still friends over it. You know, we strive for that, and I think all of us elected realize why we're elected. We're certainly not doing it for the money. I mean, it's not the money aspect. We do it because we have a passion and need to want to serve the community. We can't serve you unless we understand what it is you'd like us to do, so we need to hear your input. But I'd just like to see a little more harmony, and a little bit more happiness, because I think we have a lot of great things going on. If you really sit back and smell the roses, and you look around this great community, we really have more things to celebrate than we really do to complain about, and I think we're blessed. And I think that's a combination of the citizens and their efforts to tell us what they would like us to do, and the effort of this management and council to see that that stuff gets done. That's what we're elected for. Thanks. Councilman Peterson.
I agree that there should be a three-minute rule in the beginning, and then a three-minute on each agenda item, but I really don't want to see a time limit at the end. I don't really feel that citizens really abuse that. I mean, you can count on one, on your one hand, how many times citizens have abused, gone over five minutes. So I'd like to see no time limit at the end, but I agree that there should be one in the beginning and on each agenda item, but not at the end. Thank you.
I'm going to close out participation after everybody's done. Come on up here, Mrs. Buffa, and then I'll let council complete this.
Mayor Lane and Council. Power and control are a wonderful tool when used for the benefit and success of the community. However, when it's used to undermine and limit the ability of citizens of Frazier to express their thoughts and feelings about various community issues and proposals on the monthly agenda by curtailing the time element during citizen participation, this becomes a shabby way to place more controls on our citizens and our freedom of speech. This meager time allowed, which at times citizens found it difficult to fully express their point of view on the issue at hand. Mayor Lane and Council, it seems you have a lack of interest and consideration towards some of our citizens' messages at times. You folks want no challenges. Our opinions at times are of little value towards your final decisions. Mayor Lane and Council, do you think we are inept and undereducated to take up your time about city issues during citizen participation? We citizens of Frazier finance and carry this city. Our opinions should be more valued and respected than has been shown here from this council. However, I will say there is one power we citizens have that you folks cannot curtail, that is our power we exercise at the polls.
Thank you. Yes, you do. Anybody else? Okay, I'll close citizen participation. I'm going to bring it back up here to council. I could entertain, entertain a motion. Mayor Proton Wilson.
participation by citizens at the beginning of meetings for those persons who are unable to stay. I'm doing one, I think.
Oh, okay.
To avoid confusion, maybe we do one piece at a time.
Gotcha.
So that we can.
Okay. So just so we're clear, they can speak, the intent of the three minutes at the beginning, I want to say it real clear, so it's in the minutes, if anybody wants to read back on and interpret it for a later date. It's three minutes at the It's three minutes at the beginning, if you're not going to be able to stay, and you're then able to voice your concern on any agenda item that's on the agenda for that evening. And knowingly, when you take that participation, then there is no further participation in the rest of the meeting. The intent of using that three minutes.
On agenda items.
Yes, on agenda items. The understanding of speaking at that point in the beginning of the meeting is to allow you the opportunity to voice your concern, but you're not going to be able to stay for the meeting. So in other words, you're not going to say, "Well, I decided I'm going to stay, and there's something else I need to talk." So we're clear on that. Everybody understanding what it is?
Okay, I got one question. So if they speak at the very beginning, they're not allowed to speak through the rest of the meeting, even at the end of the citizens?
Correct. The intent is only so that you can have your opportunity right at the beginning of the meeting, so that you're not, you can go up, go where you need to go and not be able to have to stay.
Okay.
I thought the intent, I thought the intent of the motion that the Mayor Proton made was to address agenda items only, and that the limitation, the three-minute limitation at the beginning of the meeting would extend only to those agenda items, but if someone wanted to participate afterwards, we hadn't really addressed that.
Right, this is just, what does...
Just the agenda items.
Yeah, just this portion, which would be the citizen participation on agenda items, it comes right after the Pledge of Allegiance. That participation, and this is the only motion she's made, would be for three minutes on any agenda item, and the intent of speaking at that time is because you're not going to be participating throughout the rest of the meeting.
Madam Mayor, if you don't have support for that motion, I would more than happy to...
Yeah, I did. I just wanted to, we did. I just wanted to clarify, everybody fully underst...
Still, so, so you still are limiting the fact that they can't speak at the end by that motion?
Yes. Just on this, if you participate on this section after the Pledge of Allegiance, if you opt to talk at the citizen participation, the reason you're opting to speak at that point is because you want your concern listed, because you're not going to be here on any agenda item, and then you're gone. And then that's the point you speak. Otherwise, you sit and wait for each agenda item, and you have the opportunity to speak in between.
Right, but the question, let me try to get right to the gist of this. Both the motion maker and the support need to address the issue of whether, as a result of this motion, you are not allowed at the conclusion of the meeting to speak during public participation on city business.
Well, right, because...
It's the, it's, I mean, it's the motion maker and the support have to just clarify whether it was their intent that you not speak at that time by that motion.
As the motion maker, I was suggesting, it was my intent, that they have an opportunity to speak at the beginning, because they will not be able to speak later. They're forfeiting their opportunity to speak later.
Okay, so then, that's fine. I mean, she's the maker, and if you want to agree, you can agree.
Yeah, you don't have to support it.
Right. So the maker's motion means, so we're all clear on this, that once the opportunity to speak is exercised at the beginning of the meeting, then both during the meeting itself on agenda items and following agenda items during public participation, no further speaking would be permitted by that person.
That was the intent.
Okay, and that's the, that's the motion maker's motion and the support?
And that's initially how we, how we had set it up, like I said, for the person.
That's the way we've been running it.
Kids with homework or something like that, and they wanted to make...
You don't need to, I just want to make sure it's clear. That's, is that the, is that the support, and that's your intent on the support?
That's clear.
Okay.
So we're clear.
You got, you got your motion out there.
Okay. Councilman Saxauer?
Yeah, I want to discuss something about the motion. If someone comes in here and wants to speak about an agenda item at the beginning of the meeting, they have three minutes. Now, if it gets to the end of the meeting at citizen participation, and somebody wants to come in, and the same person wants to come back later and talk about maybe the parade or the city picnic, they can't speak again?
This is two-part. Because this is getting difficult.
Okay, we're just doing the first...
This is the first part. Okay, you have two ways of participating in our meeting. Okay, you have two options on how you'd like to participate. We love to have you come at the very beginning and stay till all the way to the end. You speak on every agenda item and in the end. That's one way to participate in the meeting, and that'll be the rest of the motion. This portion of participation in the meeting allows you to come in and voice your concern, so you don't have to stay to the end of the meeting.
Okay.
And go about your business and still be heard.
So it's two parts.
So there's, there's two ways of participating. Now, you don't have to talk at the beginning, you can talk all through and stay in there. We'd love to have you stay all the way to the end, but it doesn't behoove us to have everybody speak in the very beginning before we even talk on the agenda items, speak on the agenda items in the end, and then speak on the agenda items at the end of participation. So, are we clear?
I'm clear.
Okay. Okay, no. Hang on a second.
He ended publicly.
Yeah.
We got to take a vote on that.
I think the motion's clear. The motion, just so all council members understands it, is just as Mayor indicated, and that is that when you exercise your prerogative to comment on the agenda items at the beginning of the meeting, you no longer have the opportunity to speak on agenda items during the meeting or to speak during what otherwise would have been the public participation portion at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
On agenda items.
On agenda items.
On agenda items.
Right, right.
Well, that's...
Right.
At the end.
That's not what, that's not what was, that is not what was said.
Okay.
Wait a minute.
Okay.
If you speak now, you hold your tongue forever.
Right.
That's the first one. Okay? And the second, the two and three, then allow you to speak on each item and at public participation. But that, so you have options, I think, is what, if I'm hearing correctly, I'm trying to write it down.
Correct.
You have, you have option one, because you can't stay for the meeting, and you're going to book afterwards. You don't use this as an excuse to talk about an agenda items, then come back, talk on agenda items, and then talk at the end of the meeting.
Right.
So if it was, we're trying to...
You're exactly right. Option A and option B, you don't talk in the beginning, leave, go home, change clothes, and come back and talk in the end again.
So that's...
Your intent is to be able to leave.
Because we want, we're going to put this in policy form, and we're going to put it up here for everybody to see. We want to be absolutely crystal clear as to...
Correct. Counsel good? Everybody understand that part of it?
No.
Okay. Mayor Proton Wilson.
This is in opposition to not having people speak at the beginning of the meeting. I think that would be unfair after we've already done it, and after Councilman Acavetti had recommended this, or made the motion for speaking at the beginning of meetings. Basically, what we're trying to do is to give everyone an opportunity, even those who can't stay, so who know that they could be here from 7:30 to 8:00 and have to cut out. So it's important that persons be given an opportunity at the beginning of the meeting. Now, we could have, if this motion passes, it fails, we could have other motions where we would eliminate speaking at the beginning of the meetings, which I would not like to see happen at all. Or we could have some other, you know, speak 10 minutes at the beginning of the meeting on any topic you like, rather than on agenda items. So right now, it's three minutes at the beginning of the meeting on agenda items, thus forfeiting the opportunity to speak later.
And that's not...
At that particular meeting. You could always speak at the next meeting and the next one, and you...
And I think to clarify a point that was brought up, that's not three minutes on each agenda item, that's three minutes in total to discuss all items on the agenda.
All right.
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
And if this fails, we could come up with three to five, or we could come up with five or 10, or whatever.
So I have a motion, and I have a support, I have two more lights. Councilman Morelli.
I apologize for what may seem like I'm dragging this out, but I was once told if it's very, very clear, it cannot be misunderstood, and make it that clear and not make it so that it can be understood. What we are voting on is to allow audience participation at the beginning of the meeting for a period of three minutes on any agenda item, or they have the opportunity to speak on any agenda item for a period of three minutes when the agenda item is done. This has nothing to do with audience participation at the end of the meeting, nor does it preclude them from being involved at the end of the meeting. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
Well, that's my concern.
Well, that's what I'm trying to, okay, let...
I know.